I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting to order. And with your permission, Mr. Moby will turn it over.
That'll be great, thank you.
To Mr. Segala, who's in number 12.
Rebecca McGinnis and I are excited to be here this evening to highlight and share Quincy Public Schools' Career Vocational and Technical Education Program Improvement Plan for 2022 and 23. I'd like to begin with our mission statement, which is on page four of the program improvement plan. Quincy Public Schools' Career Vocational and Technical Education emphasizes an education with academic rigor, technical proficiency, and civic obligation. Our community fosters respect for individual and cultural diversity, while our curriculum and programs provide a comprehensive education, which opens multiple career paths. Where the students intend to pursue a college education, employment, trades, or military service, Quincy's Career Vocational and Technical Education Program provides programs to facilitate their success. Graduates of Quincy CBT Program will be skilled and contributing members of our 21st century global community. I'm now going to head to page 12, our organizational chart. We're proud of our 19 Chapter 74 approved program pathways, our three non-Chapter 74 programs, as well as our various career education electives offered to students in grades nine through 12 at both Quincy High and North Quincy High School. We're proud of our 1,431 students currently enrolled in our CBT programs, which include 357 students enrolled in our freshman seminar exploratory program, a slight decrease of 100 students total of the 1431 from last year. We're proud of our 36 unique and talented professional staff members who consistently establish and foster strong relationships with our students. It's incredible. We're proud of our two industry specialists, our power professionals, and our two CBT support liaisons. Within your packet at the very end, you'll find a pink handout. It's our CBT retirements, resignations, transfers, and new positions. Can only imagine this summer, we were recruiting, vetting, interviewing, and appointing many staff members. You'll notice in the pink handout, we hired two film and television production instructors. We had one retired and one resign. We hired three business technology teachers this summer, two retirees and one transfer. Through your support, we hired a brand-new healthcare technology instructor because of the increase in enrollment in our healthcare program at both Quincy and North. And we had a resignation of an information support and networking service instructor at Quincy High School, and we still are seeking that individual currently. So you'll see the bios along with qualifications of those instructors. At this time, Rebecca will turn it over and begin to review the goals for 2022-23.
Quincy's 2022-23 CBTE team goals are as follows. They're on pages 13 to 17 in the program improvement plan. Goal one, this is a new goal, it is on page 14. It is to support our high schools' school improvement plan academic goal. The CBTE team will design and develop a new writing prompt, my career vocational educational experience, including a rubric for Quincy's CBTE career portfolio. The writing prompt will include the six CBTE frameworks, including safety and health, technical, embedded academics, employability, management, and entrepreneurship, and technological knowledge and skills. This goal will be completed by May 2023. Traditionally, a writing prompt from the student's English class was incorporated into the student's senior portfolio. This year, our goal is to focus the writing prompt on the student's vocational experience. In a strong educational experience, students are able to articulate their knowledge and skills. This writing prompt will be presented by the CBTE student during their senior interview. Goal two, it's a continuous goal, it's on page 15 in the program improvement plan. To support our high schools' school improvement plan, the goal of social-emotional learning, the CBTE team will continue to implement a variety of character development strategies, including empathy, ethics, and growth mindset into our CBTE curriculum by June 2023. The CBTE team members requested that we continue with this goal as it supports our school goal, more importantly, our CBTE students' well-being as they transition from the COVID era. Goal three, it's a continuous goal, it's on page 16. To increase non-traditional pathway opportunities for high school students, including Quincy's CBTE programs, to ensure success beyond graduation by June 2023. With the support of Mayor Koch and the CBTE support liaisons, we continue to increase our commitment of work-based learning initiatives, which includes co-ops, internships, job shadowing, guest lectures, and employment opportunities, as well as a military service component. Currently, we are in the process of placing six students in a co-op experience, including three in the plumbing technology, one in automotive technology, and two in electrical technology. We expect this number to increase over the next quarter. Goal four, it's a continuous goal, it is on page 17 and 18. During the 2022-2023 school year, CBTE staff will continue to provide students a variety of additional curriculum enhancements and educational opportunities. These curriculum enhancements complement our CBTE programs. We are proud to offer CBTE students a variety of additional curriculum enhancements, including the annual fashion show, the innovative engineers presentations, the National Business Honor Society, Credit for Life Fair, the Health Fair, and of course, our Tiny House project. We are grateful to Tim Cahill, President and Executive Director of the Quincy's Chamber of Commerce, for spearheading this project. We are appreciative of our partnership with Lee Kennedy Company, who recently coordinated Quincy's Constructing Your Future Career Day. Students in our trade programs have the opportunity to explore the construction process from bidding to the closeout. Quincy's 2022-2023 Program Advisory Team Membership Goals are as follows. They're on pages 19 and 20 in your program improvement plan. CBTE Program Advisory Team Goal One, this is a continuous goal, it's on page 20. To design and develop Quincy Public Schools' Career Vocational and Technical Education Program Advisory Team Report by April 2023 for a presentation to the Quincy School Committee by May 2023. Quincy's Program Advisory Team Meeting was held on Thursday, October 20, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at both North Quincy and Quincy High School. Approximately 130 guests were in attendance. This is a tremendous opportunity for our students, our teachers, to collaborate with a multitude of representatives from industry, labor unions, post-secondary education institutions, our community, as well as students and parents. In your packet, the appendices, you will find the 2022-2023 CBTE Program Advisory Team Memberships, Meeting Invitation, as well as the meeting agenda. Our second Program Advisory Team Meeting will be held in May. CBTE Program Advisory Team Goal Two, this is also a continuous goal, it's on page 20. To enlist CBTE general advisory and program advisory team members to present a relevant lesson or a visitation to their workplace or post-secondary institution for students in each career vocational and technical education major by May 2023. Program advisory team members are currently scheduled to visit classrooms and shops to share their pathways, experience, and/or teach a relevant lesson. In many instances, they conduct senior interviews with our students, which will include the review of their writing prompt. CBTE students continue to benefit from multiple curriculum enhancements through our CBTE program advisory teams, ranging from the IBW Local 103, who have met with the Electrical Technology Program and the Information Technology Program, to learn about the apprenticeship and scholarship opportunities. Currently, Quincy's CBTE program has eight seats in the IBW Local 103 apprenticeship program. In addition, through our Program Advisory Team membership, our Healthcare Technology Program participated in the Quincy College Nursing Program Simulation Lab. Quincy's CBTE Professional Development Plan, it's on page 21. The primary focus of Quincy's CBTE Professional Development Plan is the planning, implementation, and reflection of our team's goals and action steps, of which you will find on page 21. With the scheduled NIASC accreditation visitation in December, the CBTE staff have been focusing on updating curriculum guides aligned with their CBTE program frameworks. In addition, CBTE staff continue to update certifications and credentials that students are able to earn during their tenure in high school. Our newest certification includes the Hot Works training. Please refer to the appendices for a complete listing of the credentials and certifications. Thank you.
So at this time, we can certainly answer questions, comments?
Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Santoro.
With the design of the rubric for the writing prompts, did you have assistance from anybody, or you just came up with your... Did the English department help you, or did you just kind of do the rubric yourselves?
We did the rubric ourselves, and we circulated amongst ourselves and compared it to many rubrics. So most of our faculty use rubrics on a regular basis.
Okay, but nothing in common? See, I was hoping that there were things done in common with other departments so that students get accustomed to answering this type of questioning in a way that everybody's doing the same thing to help them along, since that's usually the way we do things we do poorly in when we take our tests. That's all, I was just inquiring.
Okay.
The other thing is professional development. As you do your own professional development, does it conflict with the school's professional development in any way, or are you able to manage doing yours as well as theirs? Because those staff are, they're going in two different directions.
Well, usually it starts, I'll have Rebecca answer that question, but usually it starts together as a group, right? Both high school, all staff report to one location, and then they'll have their professional development as a school, and then we split off and do departments.
Split off.
Usually about an hour, hour and a half, if not two.
Well, thank you for the informative packet. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Gattuso.
Three quick questions. Three quick questions, thank you. Excellent presentation. So the first goal you said was a new goal?
Yes.
I like it. Can you explain what prompted it this year?
We try to implement as much writing as we can. We usually run with the Collins Writing Program, which is a simpler way to just implement writing on a regular basis. And again, many of our students, because some of them aren't going to college, they didn't have that particular essay, and we wanted to emphasize and get them ready, a little bit more prepared to talk about their programs when they go on an interview. And by writing it down and collaborating and rewriting it, we just felt that that would be a good opportunity.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
In most cases too, as students articulate about their technical skills, we do a lot of interviewing skills at the end of the year with our community business partners, but we wanted to make sure that students understood not only their technical skills, but all the other frameworks and competencies that they're cycling through over the pathway, three-year pathway, that they could understand and articulate what they know.
Got it. Last two quick questions. The certifications, did you say there was just one change, one new certification?
There's one, this year there's a new one, it's Hot Works. However, there's some new frameworks that are out, they're drafted from the Department of Ed, and there's quite a few new ones out there, so we're exploring those now, and our goal is to hopefully in fall of '23, begin to implement others. But if you see that list
I did.
In the appendices, it's pretty extensive.
It's huge.
We're very grateful and very proud of the credentials that we offer our students.
And last question is, is there a parental advisory committee? Do you have parental, do you get parental input in this? I mean, I noticed the advisory team, but how do you elicit parental participation?
On those teams, Mr. Gattuso, there is a parent and a student on each of those program advisory teams.
Excellent, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gattuso. I have a couple of questions. I have a very similar question to these gentlemen's on the first goal, because it says in the goal statement that you're supporting the students' academic goals, and...
The school improvement goal is writing, so we wanted to make sure that we support writing.
I think it's going to be a difficult one to determine whether or not your work has had an impact when you're doing it at the end of the senior year on their academic goals. But I just, you know, I just think it's going to be more difficult to... If you would put it in earlier, and I know it doesn't make sense earlier, what I love about that goal is that it does bring in all the strands.
Yes.
Is that it does tell the kids that they learned all that other piece of the frameworks too, besides the technical competence, so I really do love that about it. I just think that without knowing what kind of impact it's going to have, maybe it'll impact them on their interviews, which would be a good thing, if that's the hope. I love the SEL goal. I really love all the other goals. The non-trad goal is good, but I think, you know, compared to the state, you're not doing too badly as non-traditional numbers, percentages, you're really not doing that badly compared to the state. It's a difficult thing for most schools, but I think your percentage is pretty good. Goal four, the added curriculum stuff in goal four is tremendous. The experiences those kids are getting are tremendous. The membership on the individual advisory teams is incredible, and I really want to thank the city, because there are so many professionals in our community, both who work for the city and work in this, who just live in the community, who are giving their time and their effort to work on these kids and these programs. So I really want to make sure that we give them a thanks publicly, that they're doing such great stuff. The certification credentials are great too. These are not all ones that you've earned this year, but these are all ones that are available, correct?
That's correct.
I know that some people had trouble with like CNAs and stuff, because the pandemic really caused us some damage there, and even for some hourly programs. So I know that we haven't been able to achieve all of these this year, last year, but we are moving back to that.
That's correct.
So I think it's wonderful. I'm very interested in the core indicators, so you didn't mention those, but those are their, those are their MCAS scores, and they're doing very well in the core indicators too, so.
Ms. Lebo, if I could just indicate, those core indicators are in the back of the appendices.
Yes, I see it.
However, there is no data available for the academic component.
Right.
And it is 2021, and it's, of course...
Right, right, but still, I mean...
Doing very well in some of those other...
You're doing very well. You really are doing very well. And even though, like I said, the non-trad is one of your weaknesses, your only weakness, it's not as bad as a lot of places in the state. So it's a difficult thing to get by, and so I just want to, you're doing very well with that. I love the core indicators.
Thank you.
I'm good. Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept that improvement by Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Santoro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. This thing is not as easy as it used to be. Just don't talk, you might be on it. At this point, I would like to ask Mr. Ford to join us.
And Mr. Smith.
And Mr. Smith. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you so much for coming. And we will turn this right over to you, and you can present your school improvement plan to us.
Mrs. Lebo, Vice Chair Santoro, Superintendent Moby, members of the school committee and members of the superintendent's leadership team, I want to thank you for taking the time to review our 2022-2023 school improvement plan. Assistant Principal Ed Smith and I are here to discuss our plan with you. Our entire high school leadership team comprised of department chairs and principals, as well as our new guidance department chair, Mr. William Reardon, are excited about the direction we are heading towards as a school community. Our focus for this year and beyond requires four major components: being accountable, create a sense of belonging, establishing a culturally responsive curriculum, and building a positive sense of community. Accountability, belonging, curriculum, and community, also known as ABC squared. In order to embed this to the framework of who we are as a community, the theme for this year is be intentional in what we do. Throughout this presentation, you will hear how the plan to accomplish our goals are intentional. I will now turn it over to Assistant Principal Ed Smith, who will reflect on last year's data and goals, and talk briefly about our current NIASC process.
Thanks, Mr. Ford. Hi, everyone, thanks for having us tonight. While there remain many areas in which we can improve, we're relatively pleased with the progress that was made over the last year. This year, we've started a faculty data and assessment team for the 2022-2023 school year, made up of two English teachers, two math teachers, two science teachers, and myself. We meet every two weeks and are starting to review MCAS data by student subgroups, question types, and the framework standards. A few data points to note from last year's assessments is that an improvement was made from 54% to 59% of students exceeding or meeting expectations on the ELA MCAS, a 3% increase to 48% of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations on the math MCAS. In science, we focused on open responses, excuse me, this year, and it's a baseline year with the new standards on the MCAS testing, and so our baseline is 46% of Quincy High School students are meeting or exceeding expectations. On the access test, 28% of students made progress. This is up from 14% the previous year. And on the 2022 vocal survey, the school environment rating for all students went up from 45% to 46%. Reflecting specifically on our school goals, so I'm on page seven in the school improvement plan, our ELA achievement goal was to decrease the number of students not meeting expectations. This goal was met, as the number, percentage of students not meeting expectations went down from 10% to 6%. Our math goal was to increase students meeting or exceeding expectations. This goal was also met, as the percentage went up from 45% to 48%. In science, as I mentioned, we look specifically at the open response question types. This goal was met, as we went up from 44% to 46% of students on meeting the criteria for the open response scores. Also to note, in the science exam, we had a positive school-to-state differential on almost all the biology domains and clusters. In social studies, we made significant progress but did not meet our specific goal. We increased our scores in the writing domain of the ELA MCAS from 47% to 50%, and on the vocal survey for our social-emotional goal, our rating, our overall school climate rating moved from a 44 to a 42. Also included in the data and goals reflection section from last year to this year, we met our goals in CBTE, English learner, special education, and the library goals were all met. For world language, performing and visual arts, and the wellness goal were partially met, with significant improvements shown. While not specifically highlighted in this section of the SIP, you'll see it woven throughout our school improvement plan and running parallel to our school improvement plan, is that 2022, we will be hosting our NIASC collaborative conference. So on December 6th and 7th, we'll be hosting four members of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges to Quincy High School. The, it's now a collaborative conference for our accreditation. It's different than it has been in the past couple of cycles, where this will be our baseline, where we're working on a self-reflection that will cover areas of learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. Instead of them coming in to assess how we're doing in all these things, they will review our self-reflection, and we will have the next 18 months to work on goals that we set with them. And our decennial visit will be in the fall of 2024, which is when they will grant us accreditation, as we are hopeful of. I'll turn it now back over to Principal Ford.
Thank you. Our school improvement plan is designed to set a standard, a firm foundation, for how we continue to move forward in closing the achievement gap. For this year, there are two primary focus areas designed to maximize the full learning potential of all of our students. The first one is to identify the needs of low-performing students and implement strategies to improve student outcomes, also known as our academic initiative, closing the opportunity gap. And then the second is our social-emotional learning equity initiative, which has goals intended to improve school climate overall. We have taken a team approach to create this improvement plan. We will be strategic in collecting relevant data, analyze our findings, make appropriate recommendations, and implement necessary changes to increase student achievement while improving our school's culture and climate. As mentioned, we have two newly formed committees. One was a data assessment team, and the second is our culture and climate committee, who will take on the role of doing the foundational work for us kind of moving forward. A huge component to our strategic approach is the work of our interdisciplinary teams. This is a group that's made up of four teams of 12 to 15 teachers on each team, who meet over 25 times per year during the school day and take ownership of their own professional development facilitated by colleagues from within the teaching staff. The main area of focus for this year is being a culturally responsive educator. Teams will spend the year discussing, analyzing, implementing, and cultural response in pedagogy into their everyday teaching practices. Some of the resources used, Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Zaretta Hammond, Hacking School Discipline by Brad Weinstein and Nathan Maynard, our exploration of best WITA practices in order to support in our EL population of students, and they were creating culturally responsive look-for's through peer observation and teaching and learning overall. On page 12, you will see our initiative, our first initiative, academic initiative, closing the opportunity gap. As we mentioned earlier, the focus is to identify low-performing students and implement strategies to improve those outcomes. Many of our departments have a goal of being intentional on decreasing the number of students who receive a 69% or lower each term. Some departments will decrease the number of students who scored not meeting expectations on the MCAS. And with those strategies that will be in place, it will include scaffolding, modifying lessons based on growth needs of our students overall. Other departments are focused on increasing the meeting and exceeding expectations on MCAS scores, as well as on students' improvements on writing skills mentioned earlier with the CBTE folks, by utilizing various writing prompts overall. I also want to mention during this time, the early, the expansion of the Early College High School. We added a statistics course to our program and have seen a 67% increase from the first year to the second year of this particular program. And even with that being said, Early College has a goal of increasing enrollment by at least 10% by the end of the school year this year as well. Our second initiative works on the social-emotional and equity is improving the school culture overall. With this initiative aiming to improve school culture, each department will, these three key components there, assess the current climate, learning environment within their respective discipline, identify areas of growth, and then establish tailored culturally responsive practices within their departments. Some departments have identified several resources to assist the staff's professional development and becoming culturally responsive educators. One is from the book The Circle Forward by Carolyn Boyes Watson. This provides us a plethora of restorative circles, templates that can be used for community building, conflict resolution, and also teaching and learning, to name a few. Already mentioned is Zaretta Hammond's Culturally Responsive Teaching book, In the Brain. That's a staple for us. Earlier, Ms. McGinnis talked about the implementation of the character development strategies, including an empathy, ethics, and growth mindset. Our English department is looking primarily into Grading for Equity by Joe Feldman. This allows for us to do a deeper dive in grading practices and finding ways to... and finding ways to enlighten, empower and encourage our students in the realm of reading and writing. Our open parachute from our student support team is probably primarily used, there's a series of lessons, icebreakers, containing social emotional learning strategies. Students the staff can use such as bullying, addictive patterns, consent and self-awareness, boundaries and respect will be also a staple in our development over time. As far as professional development, we have areas of focus for this year. Again, being intentional in that when we talk about being a culturally responsive educator. We are reviewing as an entire staff, a five-part culturally relevant teaching with Brett Hawthorne, the series we watch during every PD session. We've conducted commuter circles with the staff that will be relevant as well, as well as other culturally relevant activities as a staff. Talk briefly briefly about the NEASK and the self-reflection being a part of our professional development as well. Again, our interdisciplinary teams and their vital role in developing their staff. And we've asked our Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, Ms. Kim Connolly, to lead us in a PD session in February as well, when it deals with equity for professional development purposes. We are excited about our extended day offerings that we offer at Quincy High School. Really, the intention for our students to connect both academically and socially outside the regular school hours. We're really trying to find ways, not just outside the school day, but how do we integrate during the school day? So our National Honor Society are establishing a tutoring program that we can utilize during the school day. We're also establishing an EL tutoring program to help our, support our EL students throughout the school day as well. We're excited about some of the new clubs that were initiated this year. Our Asian Cultural Club and Latino Cultural Club. And we are extremely excited about the partnership with the YMCA. So now we can have our badminton club at the Y once a week as well. So we're excited about that. Our Student Council has been heavily involved in a lot of our extended day offerings. And part of that, and I'll mention in a minute more in depth, we had a great roll hats weekend, as you can see, the logo everywhere, roll hats, which allowed us to really showcase our, really our students' clubs and activities and sports in one extensive weekend for the entire community that we're excited about. As we turn to page forty-one, it has, we talk about our school demographics overall. Currently, we have fourteen hundred and fifty-two students at Quincy High School. Sixty-three percent are coming from low-income families. Twenty percent are special education students and ten percent, one hundred and fifty-three students are are English language learners. Of that fourteen hundred and fifty-two students, four hundred and fifty-nine of them are enrolled in advanced and higher level courses, which equals out to thirty-two percent. You will see the breakdown by race and subgroups in your packet there as well. Our goal really for the next two to three years is to increase representation of our marginalized students in honors and advanced level courses. We want to be able to provide mentoring, advising and tutoring opportunities. And this will be continued school-wide academic initiative moving forward. Our family engagement and communication is really a key to what we need to do, continue to move forward. We really want to focus on the communication with families. Again, our roll hats weekend was not just for students and or staff. It was really everyone, a part of the Quincy High community to come together and really highlight, celebrate. We saw tons of alumni come back and really have that sense of pride of who we are as a school community. And I think in this time, it was very important for us to really establish that. The feedback that we've received from many, you see some of us, we got a vest on now, stickers, T-shirts, you know, we had a promotional video. There was a number of things that that took place with the roll hats weekend. We will continue with that with our homecoming coming up in a week or so and other events that will happen throughout the year and beyond from that. As far as our communication is concerned, it's a priority for us that all of our families have access to what we are sending out. So the usage of the language line is a huge component for us as we try to communicate with all of our families. If you notice in any bulletins, we have a monthly president's community bulletin that's sent out, that is translated in in multiple languages. Any messages that are coming from myself or Mr. Smith are translated in the home language, the native language of our community overall. The inviting and inviting folks into our building from the back-to-school nights, parent conferences, eighth grade open houses, are all opportunities for us to continue to communicate with our community to let them know what we're doing and also express that we're here to support them moving forward from there. Finally, as far as facilities and needs improvement on pages forty-five and forty-six, we're really thankful for the improvements that took place, especially over the summer. We're pleased to have two new offices constructed in the student support departments, which is important, especially having a full-time adjustment counselor in our building, having a central location for that person is was beneficial for us. Our QHS Career Center, which is created with early college and opportunity to connect with our activities liaison and our career vocational liaison and being that in a centralized location was really beneficial for our students to really demonstrate there's multiple paths in their life journey, right? And be able to have a centralized location with those folks is a benefit. The addition of twenty radios for communication with our dean, security team, our nurses, custodians. Again, it's a huge benefit in the big building that we are in to be able to communicate swiftly, effectively. It's been a great addition for us overall. Things have been handled in a timely manner because those additions to the radio. So we're thankful for that. And we also added two new, ten new computers that were still installed this year for staff usage. Areas of need, you know, with all this community building and bringing folks in for some of our events, especially in the gymnasium, it gets hot in there, right? It get a little warm, right? So having two large fans, fans inside the gymnasium, the upgrade of the audio system is something that we're we're in need of at this point. Our main security camera system, we're working with it right now, but it does need to be updated at this point. Again, for the safety of the security of everyone having the the necessary footage in areas in the building would be beneficial for that. You know, our interactive digital sign that's right outside of our school right now is not functioning properly. We've, so we're in need to have that fixed right away. There are several lighting issues, especially in our auditorium at this point and, you know, our drama club and we have a couple of musical events coming up right now. And really, we want to be able to showcase our talented students through that time. So the lighting needs in in our building and also in our auditorium is important. And also like our HVAC runs inconsistent, right? We, that that needs to be something that we address long-term and be able to have that on point. So this this development of the school improvement plan is a total team effort overall. Our goal is to empower our staff and students to help shape the direction of our school community as a whole. Again, our goal is to be intentional and accountability, have a creating that sense of belonging, establishing a culturally responsive curriculum and building a positive sense of community, again, also known as A B C squared. This is for everyone who is a part of the Quincy High School community. Roll hats. Thank you. Yes, and so again, we really wanted to break it off in in two specific components of things from an academic perspective and our school culture perspective. And having the the data assessment team will allow us in one aspect to really look at from an academic lens where we are currently and how do we move forward? And then our culture and climate team would also be involved from a cultural perspective of where we are. And then you have each department, individual teachers within their goals. The, really, the qualification would be to have a goal or implement that goal and really monitor, measure, you know, throughout the school year to know where we are at that point. So that is a topic of discussion.
So I guess I would say, you know, probably on the academic side, you'd be able to assess some of the, you know, you'd have scores and and data to be able to help you assess. How do you assess things on the cultural side of things? And, you know, what kind of assessments would you use to be able to see if the culture is changing? If it's better, if it's, you know, what kind of things you do to assess that?
So one of the first things, you know, we said, our students will be surveyed out this year, right? You know, that's, that's one component of really letting us know. So our culture and climate team are currently, we have about, we're trying to narrow that. We have about fifty-question survey that we're putting together, right? That really deals with culture and climate. The goal would be able to do the first survey before our December vacation, be able to analyze that data, present that data, come up with action steps and then kind of see where we are in the spring based on our actions on what we receive from from our students. So that is one way to kind of measure that, right? Like having those particular surveys from there from a cultural standpoint. Really doing those from those personable touch, that personal opportunities to do check-ins with certain students, right? We're looking at data, working with our student support team, looking at data of how many high risks we may have in a particular month or time. We send out a discipline data monthly to the entire staff as well, right? To really, are we able to narrow down areas of concern? Right now, we we have seen some trends when it comes to discipline at this point that we're making our staff aware of and really trying to come up with action items to really support our students that are adjusting to 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 high school at this point. Because that's where we see our some of the problem areas are new students entering high school. You know, if you could read in between the lines from there, right? So, you know, that, those are some of the things that we're monitoring at this point and really coming up with a plan to how to support them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Santoro.
Thank you. First of all, Quincy High is very near and dear to my heart for a number of reasons. One being the hat itself, but also people may not know this, but just a little bit of history. When I was conducting a course for Eastern Nazarene for prospective principals on culture and climate, I asked the participants to go back to their schools and give the staff a survey to try to find out yourselves, you know, what could you do to remedy those situations? And for that reason, I give Mr. Brech a lot of congratulations because it was he that came up with the idea to create interdisciplinary teams. And we were fortunate to be able to do that within the course of the school day. Not many schools can do that through their scheduling. So I want to congratulate you for continuing that because to me, that's probably the most important thing in that building is to be able to empower the teachers themselves to come up with the reasons to make that school a better school. So I congratulate Mr. Taglary, yourself, Mr. Smith and the administration for continuing what I think is probably the most important thing happening in that building. And I do congratulate you, especially on your principal's community message because keeping the parents informed as to what's taking place. But as I listen to all the things that you've presented tonight, it kind of makes me happy that I'm retired because I know how hard you're working and I truly appreciate everything that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate definitely to the entire interdisciplinary team. That's why we found it to be important to highlight that it's something that has been going on for years. And we thought it was important to really highlight that teachers are working hard throughout the school day to to ensure that we're maximizing our learning potential of our students. So thank you for highlighting that as well. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the presentation. It was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. Thank you. And I just wanted through you to address the page forty-five, the facilities of need as we have historically. We moved this into facilities directly so that we can have these issues looked at. But a few of these I wanted to point out, the security cameras, if we could make sure Mr. Dracchio has that, that he's aware of that. And a couple of these things with the lighting in the sidewalk. So it sounded like safety issues to me. I'd like them addressed pretty quickly. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Gattuso. Thank you. First, I want to give a shout out to the Mr. Tag, former QHS principal and the other former QHS principal in the room for his service to Quincy High over the years. Two, I want to thank both of you for an excellent presentation and really a superb plan, I think, on the whole. Couple of comments and a couple of questions. So I love the A B C squared, accountability, belonging, curriculum, community. I think that's a great message to send. And, you know, the fact that you repeated it twice, I like that. I hope, I hope you do that at every assembly. I think that's an important message to send to all of the kids. I like the focus, I love the focus, as this group knows, on on data analysis and the fact that you you're delving deeply into the data. The efforts that you're doing around culturally responsive teaching and and closing the opportunity gap as well are pretty important. The, we had a presentation with the superintendent's goals and assessment recently. And there were four areas that concerned me specifically around chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, dropout rates and access to advanced courses. And what concerned me on those was the breakdown by income or race. And and some of the disparities were disproportionately high in those areas, whether it's black, Hispanic EL or former EL students or students with disabilities. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look through that data and talk about how you're targeting some of that? Or I know that we put it in a subcommittee and we're going to probably bring you up to do a deeper dive on that, but I didn't know if you had any initial reaction to some of that data.
Yeah, so a couple of things that, can you just name, you say chronic?
Chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, dropout rates and access to advanced courses. And and I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot right now.
Oh, that's fine.
But that's something that I would like to talk later in the school year about.
And all those things are are important for us to do a deeper dive in over the course of time. I think that coming into this year with the newness of administration is overall. So myself knew, Ed getting in position in February, but knew we have a new guidance department chair coming in. We really felt right away as far as after really speaking with students, speaking with staff, speaking with members of the community, like building that sense of community first and foremost was really the important first step for us overall, right? So getting in, before we get into as far as the chronic absenteeism, which we're working on, we want to establish a welcoming, safe, respectful environment for everyone to come into. So we want to establish a place that our students would be able to feel comfortable, know that they have support to come into that building. Then we start working with, all right, the the chronic absenteeism and things like that. We meet weekly as far as our student support team. We really, every, every student that has issues from absences, we know exactly, you know, our team would know exactly what's going on with what one particular student. We come up with action plans for each student during that time. As far as, again, with the dropout rate, you know, really some of our plans that we have in place, you know, we're taking advantage. Our evening school is something that we take advantage of, right? With some of our students, we work with several programs throughout the district, you know, whether it's at Quincy High or at North to really work with our students that, you know, for whether it's social emotional reasons why they're out, whether it's from behavioral issues. Like there are paths or plans to continue to work with students that we identify as high-risk students overall, right? So there is a plan to kind of deal with some of these action items that you mentioned, those four points that are a concern from a district level. And so we're doing what we can at this point to establish a place in our school building that students will continue to want to be a part of and really working with Quincy Public Schools as a whole to work on what different areas or different areas, platforms, places that our students can go to that may be struggling in a regular, general setting of a Quincy High School.
The, and and, you know, some of this could be COVID-driven or post-COVID-driven around that. But what it would be useful is next time you're back before us, just to do a deeper. But I, what, what it would be useful is next time you're back before us, just to do a deeper dive on some of that data, especially among those populations. And, and, um, just think through, looking at the data, that next time you're up here with next year's plan, uh, I'm going to be interested in knowing any interventions or techniques or things that we've done that will look at especially those populations that appear to have higher numbers, disproportionately higher numbers. So that, that would be helpful. The, uh, a lot of the communication, love communication, communication is a big deal. Two-way communication is as important as one-way communication. So, um, you know, in the plan, mechanisms for two-way communication. I know you talked a little bit about the surveys, um, which is important. On, on the facility side, uh, two things. One, you know, I heard, especially on the shoulders of the year, in, in the spring and the fall, how hot the building is. You know, it, it's a big deal and it's, you know, something that I think that we need to help you to, to manage that issue. Uh, as mentioned before, the security cameras, that was on last year's list. That was on last year's list and we had specific asks about that. So, you know, I know that we will meet again and, and talk through some of that. But that's an important thing, I think, for us to look at, uh, because an issue like that. And you did mention, and maybe you could elaborate a little bit, um, on some of the incidences. I don't know if there's been a spike or an increase and we can deal with that separately or any of that. But all of this seems interconnected to me. You know, that security cameras and having security cameras up or appropriate lighting will, will help you potentially, you know, minimize some of these issues. Probably a whole variety of variables, every incident's different. But, you know, we want to help you be in a place to deal with that. So, uh, anything you can say about the incidents that have taken place, the nature of the incidences? You said trends, there were, you're looking at trends?
Yep. So what I meant by trends, um, we're, we're, we're noticing, um, again, like getting into the realm of students that are entering high school, right? That transitional period right now, that, you know, again, we're really establishing a firm foundation as far as what our student expectations are, right? And getting everyone fully on board with that, right? And so, um, that's still in a transition period with the understanding from our students of here's our expectation, right? We're, we're really trying to, when incidents occur, and be able to communicate with our community of what, this is what's going on, especially in the realm of social media, right? That, and really that, that word of mouth is like playing telephone, right? And it could be something that could be very small in nature, that can be, you know, broadcasted in a way that would really, you know, put us in the bind. So we wanted to make sure that our communication, it comes directly from me, this is what happened, this is how we handled that situation, and this is how we're going to move forward, right? And we're re- direct with that communication with families. So they're not just going off of what they heard from peers and things like that. So we want to be clear, um, in that direction. Um, I think the addition, I probably should have added too. I think the addition of our, uh, security team overall, having seven security staff overall has been tremendous for us, um, to really keep our eyes and ears on what's going on. And not only for them from a security perspective, but in a lot of ways, they've built relationships with many of our students to be able to communicate certain things that are necessary for us to move forward, right? And so that has been a huge benefit for us that, you know, students do feel comfortable enough to go to a trusted adult to say, here, this is what, something that's going on and that we're able to handle that right away, right? And so, you know, obviously, and to be quite honest, like some of the communication that I had to send out, it's like, ugh, like it's tough, right? You know, you got to deal with that. But we feel as though, you know, making sure the community is aware that we have dressed it, that we handled that, and that we still have a safe environment that we're, we're, we have here for all of our students and staff is important to relay to, to the community. So, you know, we're, we're hoping, I'm very hopeful and optimistic on the direction that we're going in overall. Uh, Quincy is a great place. Quincy High School is a safe place and you see it all the time, our kids coming in in the morning, right? You know, like very respectful, right? We do the discipline data, right? That is very small in comparison to the overall number of our students. We know there are certain students that we're still trying to support from some of the behaviors that they're displaying at this point, right? And we're going to help support them on that, right? But that number is small, right? But the impact at times has been larger, right? And we don't want that impact to affect what's going on in the entirety of our whole building because there's a lot of great things happening right now.
And the final question, and then you know this because I asked last year when you were at North, parental input into the plan.
Yes.
Has there been, you know, how, how does parent input go into the plan, into the student improvement plan?
So it first started out from conversations that we've had with parents, um, really in a, from our PAC meetings, from, um, conversations that I've had with parents over the summer, through the Roll Hats Weekend, right? And a lot of it had to do with the climate and culture, right? And the, the climate overall is something from, I would say, through the, the whole community is something that folks were yearning for, such things that whether it's pandemic or other issues that have happened, right? We've known that the issues that happened last year overall, right? But being able to bring that back, and that's what parents, you know, really wanted to see overall. Felt as though, hearing from parents, like from an academic perspective, there's a lot of opportunities here. Love the, from the vocational program, opportunities that are there for their students and everything else is that sense of belonging. And especially when it comes to our EL families, having an opportunity to know, to, to know that my family is also supported and that's something that we're working on every day.
So, uh, conversations led to some of the modifications and things that are in the plan, is that what you're saying? And, um, and, and I, I think it's universal, but the plan doesn't go out, circulate it to the PAC or anybody else before it comes to us. Because when, when you leave today, you're looking for a vote from the school committee, which means it's a done deal, we accept your plan.
Correct.
Right, yeah, so, um, so my, my guess is that you, like every other principal, hasn't put your plan out to, you know, your PTO, your PAC, you know, to, to get input on the specific plan.
As a group, no, we didn't.
Okay. And, and it might be something subsequently that I might introduce before the whole body to say, can we ask principal, principals to put their, put the plan out basically in advance to a PTO or PAC?
Does your school site council see the plan before it comes to us?
The school council, we, we're meeting with the school council, so we developed a plan. You all have seen it, the goal would be for you to say, yep, this is a goal. We're meeting with the school council, um, we have a meeting coming up in a, in a week or so to meet with the school council to go over what we've been approved upon and go from there.
I think Mr. Gattuso might have a point that maybe it would be a good idea to at least have the school site council, have a look at the plan in its development phase. Um, I know you're getting their input, but it would be nice if they have a chance to look at it because you have three, two parents and a community member on that council.
Yep.
And so hopefully they're involved with the PTO and stuff and possibly representative of, of your parents. I don't know if they are or not, but if they were. Um, but I think there's some legitimacy for the parents and I don't think every parent has to see it. I think that would be like saying, I don't think you'd have to say that. But I think it would be nice if we had a parental voice in there. And I know you have given a parental voice to it with your development of the plan. But it might be a little, make, feel a little better if the parents had been aware.
And it might be unfair to the two principals that are here tonight, you know, at the 11th hour. But, um, I, I don't know if we can, we can do something for the principals that are coming forward so that other, you know-
I, we could do it for next year, we can't, we can't, we can't do that to anybody.
But that, that would be useful, I mean, just think forward this discussion.
Duly noted, yep, that's no problem.
Excellent job, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Good luck this year.
Thank you very much.
Well, 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 I didn't have my turn.
Oh, okay. Email me, no, I'm kidding.
First of all, I want to talk, I had a whole list of things, but I've been crossing them off. So I want to talk about what, one of the discussions you had with Mr. Gattuso about the incidents. I want to tell you that your transparency is some of the stuff that's going to make things feel so much safer to the family. Because I've seen your communications and the transparency is there, it really is there. I also want to talk about the fact that, um, on the suspensions and the, the, I'm sorry, the chronic absenteeism, students who had COVID last year stayed out 10 days. If they had it twice, they stayed out 20 days. That is off the books now. And we had, every school and both of, all of our schools had chronic absenteeism at the high school level that you couldn't believe because the kids knew that they were getting sort of a get out of jail free. The kids were not penalized so much for it, but the schools still penalize for it. So just so, as far as I'm concerned, that data does need to be looked at. And I, I believe the demographics are an issue and I'm, I'm disappointed that it's worse for us this year. But, um, hopefully somebody's re-engaging with those kids. I don't know who we have to do that. I, I don't know what population we have that would help address some of the kids that have been come disengaged over the past three years. But it's an issue and I really think it's going to improve. And I, I know people look at that data all the time. So I don't, I don't want you to feel bad about the chronic absentee, feel bad about. But, but don't take personal responsibility for that because the, we were a mess. We were an absolute mess last year. Uh, so now I'm going to get to my comments and questions. I think your MCAS scores were very good considering, I think they were very good. So I'm, I'm not holding any school accountable for MCAS scores this year because I'm not. Nor is the state, so I don't need to. I'm a little concerned about the vocal data as it's coming in. There were some really, um, I believe we're going to have a presentation on the district's focal at the EDIT meeting because there are still some, some specific things in there that are disturbing. The response is disturbing, that we should either try to look at or see if the question's even fair. I love the fact that you're going to increase the surveying to all, all four grades because this is a snapshot in the 10th grade. It's not a bad place to do it because the kids have had a year in, but I think it's a good idea to do that. So I'm really happy to see that additional survey being done. I'm not sure what a sustainable cultural shift is going to be. It's on page 11, but you don't have to tell, tell me what it is now.
No, I, I mean, I can answer your question, yeah, I have no problem.
It wasn't a question, I just, I just wasn't sure what it was.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't think your culture is all that bad. I know the vocal survey is showing some stuff, but I don't think the culture is that bad. And I do want to say that I have spoken to many students and to staff. I went to Roll Hats, it was great.
Okay.
And one teacher at Roll Hats said to me, we have our school back. Because the, we were able, and it wasn't just Quincy High School, we were able to tighten up on everything. And I think we've done a really good job with that across the district. We have tightened up, we've, we've gotten kids to be able to self-regulate a little more. I think there was some loss of that during, there was a significant loss of that during COVID and, and accountability. So I think that that's also, and I think things like the Roll Hats Weekend are going to really help with that. I was a little concerned about, um, the ELA goal for grading for equity. I, is that just a department goal or is that something that the school is looking at? And how much PD is going to be done around it before we start embracing grading change?
So that is, that's, right now it's starting at the, uh, department level, right? So one of the, one of the issues, I know it's something that we were going to talk more, um, broadly with the entire group, is our grading policies overall, right? And so that is something, you know, some of the things that we've had, some of the policies that we have in place when, when it comes to grading, you know, attaching attendance to grading, you know, things like that are something that, you know, as a, as a whole group, we will want to explore moving forward.
We, we might have to take that to policy, don't you think? That, that's a school committee policy, some of that stuff, so you, we can't really just change it, so.
Right, so we're not, we're not in the process of changing anything or just, it's more of a exploration. But some of the components in there as far as the writing that's component to that and, um, the process of being able to, you know, through the grading of taking certain drafts and count it as a draft, um, and, and not get to the final draft right away, just on, on the process of grading, certain research writing assignments are things that they're exploring at times with the English department.
Uh, one, uh, two or three more questions, really, I'll be brief. Which classes have enrollment of 28, 29, or 30, and do you know offhand what those classes are?
That's a good question, you got me, you got me on that one. I, I don't know offhand, um, on that one.
Let me put this on Ms. Owens first.
I believe Quincy High School has very few classes that fall in the 26, 27. And they were, they're like, the psychol- it's always psychology, AP Psychology are among the biggest classes. And these are just core classes, so no electeds.
Standard algebra class?
No, no, they were all, I believe for Quincy High School, it was 11th and 12th grade advanced classes. Um, and it's definitely at least two AP Psychology are two of those classes.
I, I can definitely find out for you which classes they are.
She, she knows. She's correcting me, that's okay, she does look at that.
Science classes are all 25 and below, I know that, that we've, we've been really careful about that at both, at both high schools.
And, um-
No, I was going to say, EL is a little high right now, um, you know, so we're, we're really trying to work that out. And we, we need a position. So just to be honest with you, we're, we've been put, putting postings out for that. So if anybody's listening, you know, if they're licensed in EL, definitely please apply for the position because that's something that we need at this point.
So my other quick questions or comments are, and this is going to go to Ms. Papil and ultimately it won't go to you. I'm happy with the open parachute, especially the way you're linking it to standards and the work is being done. But I still think we need a curriculum map because so many people are doing this work, uh, social, emotional learning. I know it's a push for you, all departments have a social, emotional goal, and I think it's really great and it's important. But I think we need a map to know who's teaching it when K through 12, that's not on you. Okay, it really is not on you. I am very, very happy with the plan and I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, by Mr. Santoro, seconded by Ms. Cahill, all in favor of accepting the plan?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you both, gentlemen. Good evening, folks, and thank you so much for coming. It's nice to see you all. Um, and we'll let you start right with your plan.
Uh, good evening, uh, Vice Chair Santoro, Members of Schools Committee, Superintendent Mulvey. Um, I, before I start getting into the school improvement plan, I, I do want to thank Noreen and Helena. Uh, it has been an incredible transition to North Quincy High School. Their confidence, their passion, their, um, understanding of how North Quincy and why North Quincy has been so successful for so many years has just been, um, such a blessing for me as I transition from one school to the next. I don't know that they'll say the same about me, but that's a different story. The mics, I have the mic right now. Um, the other thing I just want to say before I get into our plan is the amount of opportunity that is provided at North Quincy High School for the kids that walk through those doors every day is absolutely incredible. Um, what the school committee and the superintendent and, and the leadership team has been able to make happen, uh, at North Quincy High, and I can speak for Quincy High because I'm so familiar with the, the number of kids that, that I had at Meadows that, that went there, is just, is just amazing to me. Um, so kudos to you for, for providing so many opportunities for success for, um, the kids that walk through, uh, those doors every single day. I just, I just think it's amazing. And it speaks very much to what our school improvement plan is about. Um, Thomas Friedman wrote a book in 2005 called The World is Flat, um, in which he discusses events that have flattened the world over the course of the last 100 years. And it comes a lot about the same time as the Common Core standards were adopted, looking to push, uh, kids and schools to be able to make sure that when kids left high school, they were truly college and career-ready. And you know as well as I do, there's a number of studies that kind of outlined where their deficiencies were um, and how, uh, schools in Massachusetts, schools across the country have really leveraged um, to provide opportunities to make sure that when kids leave, they really truly are ready for college or, uh, or the workforce. And so that idea, uh, that Thomas Friedman puts forth is about, is about making sure um, that we provide opportunities for kids to be in the upper echelons of whatever, um, area they choose to study, whether it's college or, or, um, uh, technology or healthcare or carpentry or plumbing or, or whatever it is, um, so that they can be successful in a country, in a world that's kind of ever-changing. Um, and I think what you'll see from my principal's message is that, um, excellence is really the business that we're in. Um, whether that is educational, or excuse me, academic excellence, um, excellence in teaching, excellence in learning, excellence in, um, supporting our students social, emotionally, um, that it really is about every single kid that walks through- that walks through the door, whether they are from a different culture, whether they speak a different language, whether they have special needs, whether they have struggles at home and hurdles at home that really do prevent or create specific, very difficult barriers for their learning. It's about making sure that we have the supports in place to handle every single individual kid on an every single day basis. And so when I talk about increasing structural capacity for teachers, that comes in a number of different forms. It comes from walkthroughs from us. It comes through observations from us. And really, the idea behind this plan is you set the bar for excellence for your entire staff. You set the bar of excellence for all of your kids. And as everybody approaches that bar, you raise it a little bit higher because everybody has a different starting point, and it's important for us to make sure that there are safety nets in place for those students, but also just as important to take our valedictorian and make sure that she gets pushed for four years while she's at North Quincy High School, or for the one student that, that needs a different kind of support, that we have a plan that's a living document in many respects, that we can adjust midstream, halfway through the school year or tomorrow, to make sure that every student gets the chance and the opportunity, not only to learn, but to be cherished, cherished, and find a place where they truly belong. Because we all know that when kids are comfortable and they feel like they belong, their learning skyrockets in many respects. And so increasing structural capacity and making sure that we're aligned across departments and interdisciplinary speaking. It is still about creating a community and talk about a community. If you've not been to North Quincy High School, the community itself, the learning community, the larger community is an absolute pleasure to be part of, but it is intentional that we make sure that we do create a sense of belonging for all of our students. And there's, you know, there's 180 staff members right now that are home prepping and grading because you know as well as I do that the term ends tomorrow. And if they're like me, I waited till the bitter end to make sure every kid had a chance to pass and whatever they could to get credit for it. And that's what our teachers are doing tonight. And that's what our parents are doing tonight, supporting their kids in the best way that they can so that they can be successful at school. One kind of small, just an example of, you know, kind of diversifying how we support our kids. We're starting a program this year called I Am King. It's through the He Is Me Foundation, which is out of Boston. It's a, it's a teacher leadership program for teachers of color, in particular male teachers of color. We're starting next week. We have a teacher that's in training that's going to be coming to, to North and mentoring 10 kids, 10 males of color over the course of the school year so that we can help. And that's with the help of Kim, who kind of led us onto, onto that. But we know that, that support comes in many forms and it takes, you know, real strategy to make sure that we have the supports in place for each one of our kids or groups of kids as well. If you look at our data from last year, I'll just point out a couple of things. Our accountability data, if you look at the student group percentiles, North Quincy High ranked overall in the 73rd percentile, meaning that 72, we, our school, our kids outperformed 72% of Massachusetts high schools. Our high need subgroup is in the 93rd percentile, which means that we, our high need subgroup did better than 92% of the same group across Massachusetts. 97th percentile for low income students, 93rd percentile for students with disabilities. And so what you see are scores that, that are indicative of a great deal of success, success in the classroom. But as I said earlier, success in the classroom does not necessarily happen without a kind of support and a culture and a community that, that cherishes each individual kid. If you look at our, our data for advanced coursework, 73% of our students took advanced coursework in 11th and 12th grade, which is absolutely incredible. 70% of our student, our ELA students were in the meeting or exceeding expectations category, which is 12% higher than the state. 64% of our math students were in the meeting or exceeding expectation, which is 14% higher than the state average, and 77% for our science students who took the science MCAS as compared to 62% from the state. What I've pushed, what we've pushed with our teachers this year is, when we look at the growth percentiles, for ELA is 47.5%, which is below the state average. And so we're very intent on making sure that not only do we have high achievement, which comes out in those meeting and exceeding expectations scores, but also making sure that we have growth among those students as well, you know. And so I talked about the valedictorian earlier. Every kid, every teacher deserves to be pushed so that they can be better every single day they walk through the door. And so that is an area of concern a little bit. However, our EL, former EL subgroup and our special ed subgroup in ELA did beat the state growth percentile. Math was 55.8, which is just a couple of points off of what the state will call high growth percentile of 60. Our EL and former EL subgroup is 66.1% for mathematics. Our Asian subgroup is 66.4. Our high need subgroup was 58.4. Our low income was 59.4, and our special ed subgroup was growth of 59.4, which is just six points shy of what's considered high growth as determined by the Department of Education. You need this. Excuse us for one second.
Hi. That was loud. So I just wanted to share with all of you that 380 of our 10th and 11th grade students chose to take the PSATs in October of this year. And today I just placed an order with the College Board for 745 tests for 306 of our 11th and 12th graders to take the AP tests. So the academics are really alive and thriving at North.
So we look at our vocal data and it's always telling. Like Quincy High School, our plan for this year is to, because it's only a snapshot, right? It's only 10th grade. Middle school, it's only eighth grade. Elementary school, it's only fourth grade, or excuse me, fifth grade. We want to be able to use and really be able to survey all of our students to get a sense of how all of our students feel in terms of that vocal data. I will say that, you know, 95% of our kids agree or strongly agree that adults that work at North Quincy High School are respectful regardless of race, culture, family income, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. 86% of our students feel as though they belong in the school community itself. 82% of our students are encouraged to take AP classes by their teachers at school. And so there, obviously all the data is there. There are some areas that we would like to kind of delve and drill down a little bit deeper to figure out how we can improve those things. But as I said earlier, creating a sense of belonging, which is clearly there, does foster academic growth in ways that, that don't necessarily come out through testing. I don't know every kid's name yet. You know, I'm very keen over the years of making sure that I know every kid, every kid's story. I'm getting close, I think. I'm getting close, I think. But the intention there is to make sure that everybody has access to, you know, a person that cares about them, that they trust. And it's amazing if you walk through the hallways at North, the relationships that the teachers have, the relationships that the assistant principals have and the guidance counselors have and our deans have. And I've pushed all of them, you know, you have a caseload, but every kid on your caseload, you should know, because we're in the business of making sure that everybody has everything they need and not just some. Over the course of last year's goal, we did, we did not meet our English goal. But I think what you'll see from the goals that were created last year and the goals that we have for this year, they really are rigorous. They really do push in terms of percentage how many kids we're trying to move. Last year, we were looking for a 2% increase on the reading anchor standard for ELA. We did not meet that, but we're starting at a baseline of 78%. And we, we met it. It was the same last year, but in looking at our standards reports, the majority of, actually, I take that back, every single one of our standards in ELA, math and science, did exceed significantly the state average. Math, our goal was to improve our proficiency rating for meeting and exceeding expectations by 10%, which we did at 14%. Our science goal for last year was a 4% increase in proficient advance. We tied that. We met that. We did the same as, as the year before, but not unlike the statewide trends. Everybody saw a dip in their scores after kids had to deal with, you know, multiple years of remote or hybrid or no school or et cetera. We did, each department last year also created a social emotional learning goal, and I think as you can see from the vocal data, there was a great deal of social emotional learning. It does feel like school prior to COVID to me. It did not last year. It was a very different kind of year last year. It's very refreshing to be at school with kids learning, kids meeting expectations, pushing kids beyond expectations and getting, you know, getting a little bit of, Mr. Gilbert, how come we can't wear hats? Mr. Gilbert, how come we can't do this? How come I can't bring coffee in if I'm late for 45 minutes? And I say, well, I'll try that with the superintendent. I'll come in late to a meeting 45 minutes late, but I'll have a fresh coffee. And he's going to say, oh, you're late 45 minutes. Well, you got to stop for a coffee. Ongoing banter among principal and kids, which I of course love, and certainly is, is the best part of the day when you get to spend your time with the students. So we have academics this, goals this year for both ELA, math, science, EL, social studies. And I think what you'll see in those is that there is a great deal of pushing towards getting better in areas that maybe traditionally we didn't. So if you look at our science, it's about open response. It's about constructed response, an area that has been the vein, the albatross for many schools in terms of MCAS. And we're looking to improve the number of students that score two points or better by 5%. And in math, we're looking to increase that proficiency rating again by 10%, an increase of 5% in the reading standard for informational text craft and structure for, for ELA, looking to move our students in EL 0.5% level on the reading comprehension domain on the 2023 access, which may seem like not that much, but it is a great deal of movement if you can get 70% of your kids to move a half a point from where they were in that particular domain. Everybody knows how difficult it is to grow in learning a new language and how challenging the access test can be. And our social studies department, which is, you know, where I feel most at home, being a social studies teacher, being very focused on making sure that not only do we push our kids academically, but also it is our responsibility to build citizens at North Quincy High School. It is important for us to appeal to students' civic responsibilities. And if you were at North this morning, you heard about, I went to vote yesterday, pushing our 18-year-olds, seeking out 18-year-olds yesterday at school saying, it's the most important right you have. If you want to change something in America, you need to go and vote and challenge kids. You come show me, show me your I voted sticker and I'll give you, I don't know what I gave them, candy bars or something. But it's so important for us to not lose sight that we're building to make this city better through our, through our kids as well. Had a parent call today, an elderly gentleman that asked about community service. And he asked if, if, if students could get credit if they came to his house to rake his leaves. And I said, well, I don't know how to answer that, but I guarantee you, Mr., Ms., I don't want to say his name, that tomorrow, when I call you back, I will have a group of kids that will come to your house with me and we will rake your leaves if you need us to. As a, as a way to show kids that it's more than just school, that it is about your neighbor, it is about building citizenship. And so I, I love our social studies goal. I think, I think it's great. And I think they, it'll be a really cool thing to see them in those active civics projects. Our word language goals continue to be about obtaining proficiency levels in their language, the language that they're studying. The stuff that they do in the foreign language, I had to run upstairs the other day because I, we were in the trophy room. We had a cabinet meeting and, and it sounded like kids were running back and forth. And I went upstairs and they were doing the tango. And I said, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I didn't realize you guys were doing the tango. But it really is an immersive experience in our foreign language department. It's something that is really, really neat. The other, the other aspect that I just want to touch upon is our special ed program and the things that we offer our students at North, in particular, our kids in the intensive special needs class. As you may know, it was an incredible joy to see 12 kids that I had at preschool at Snug Harbor that went on to the CARES program, that then went to Broad Meadows, but that program got moved and it was reunited with so many kids in that program. They all do a lot of job training through the school store. Mr. Gibbons' kids also do the same through, through their coursework as well. If I could show you or take a video of how our students in the intensive special needs programs interact with our seniors in Mr. Gibbons' class, the interplay, the joking, the laughter, the friendship between those kids, if that's not what school is about, then I don't know what is. So I just wanted to make sure that people hear that because sometimes the SIP, we get lost in the data and we get lost in the, the goals, but there is relationships behind all of those things. It's pretty, pretty amazing. I'm going to turn over to Helena. She's going to talk a little bit about our social emotional goal this year and the things we have planned moving forward.
Good evening, everybody. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to talk about the student support programs that are being offered at North Quincy High. So a significant portion of what I do involves student support and helping students navigate roadblocks which may be keeping them from reaching their academic potential and also facilitating programs which will assist them with social emotional learning and well-being. Each week, our student support team meets to discuss action steps which can be implemented to help students who may be struggling. The services the team offers can range from a referral to the school adjustment counselor or health interventionist to interventions such as attendance hearings, recommending a special ed team evaluation, or pursuing the need for classroom accommodations with a 504 plan, or implementing a student success plan. Helping a student may also involve providing the family with the information and support they need to continue supporting their child at home. This year, as you know, we began implementing Open Parachute. This program currently at North Quincy High is being implemented in the ninth grade, and it'll be rolled out in phases with each grade throughout this year. Currently, our health interventionist, Ryan Hurley, is implementing it with the ninth grade students. And the lessons he has used or have included bullying and cultural messaging. In discussing this with him about the pros and cons, this, he felt this program is probably by far one of the best programs we've implemented. The resources that are available with lessons, links for parents to learn about what's being learned in class, videos, all of that, that support the, the lesson have, have been really successful. So we appreciate that that was brought, brought on. I know that one of the things that Ryan mentioned was that the customer support team at Open Parachute has also been very responsive. One of the things that we have, as you know, is we have a lot of students who are English learners, and so sometimes having videos presented in just one language can be difficult. They are being, they're currently offered with closed captioning and They are being, they're currently offered with closed captioning in English, French, and Spanish. The customer service team and Ryan have been working on the other languages that we may need, such as Chinese, Portuguese, Vietnamese. And they have been very responsive about looking to implement other closed captioning options for the video programs, which we're very happy about. The, so some of the stuff that the students have talked about in the programs is that it felt that it was current. A lot of times when we have lessons on social emotional learning, they seem a little outdated by the time it gets around and implemented. And a lot of the feedback the students have given is that it does feel current, and it feels like things that they're actually currently dealing with and struggling with. So that is some of the positive feedback that we've gotten. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You all set?
We'll wait until he's.
Couple more things, couple more things. So I do want to just talk a little bit about family engagement in PD. A lot of our PD moving from now forward will be done based on John Hattie's work on visible learning and making sure people understand the impact that they have. How do you measure the impact you have in the classroom? How do you make sure that the impact you have is having the intended results? So we'll be working on those things moving forward. The number of clubs, as I said, it's just incredible with student council or international club or Asian club. We enrolled our ping pong club in a local league. The league sent us videos of their teams. We're feeling underprepared to participate in it. But it's going to be a great thing for our kids. I kind of let them decide. We paid for their enrollment fee. There's just so many things. If you look in our SIP, the number of things that are offered, we're starting an ODW chapter at North Quincy High School, which is something, if you remember from Ron Adams prior to me running at Broad Meadows. So there really is something for everyone. The number of kids that stay after school every day, come before school every day. There's 175 kids in our ROTC who Sarge does an incredible job. They're mentoring, they're tutoring, they're doing so many things for the students and community at our school. Family engagement wise, I will thank the school committee. One of the things that we talked about last year during our school improvement plan presentations was the difficulty of getting information on the website. A webmaster was hired. She has been incredibly helpful to me. I send a newsletter, a weekly newsletter home to parents every Monday. It's done through Google Docs, which can be translated. It's a three or four-page kind of information sheet about what we think parents need to know on a weekly basis. As you know, middle school kids told their parents nothing. High school kids tell their parents even less. So part of our PAC meeting, which our next one is next week, there is an opportunity for parents to give feedback about what they think would be helpful in those newsletters. So we're constantly, I'm constantly taking, you know, maybe could you add, "This would be helpful," or "This would be helpful." We're trying to create a document that gives parents as much information as they can on a weekly basis. We still have the reader roundup. There's parent nights in early college high school and all sorts of incredible things that are happening on a regular basis. And I think you see that in the family engagement portion. There was, thanks to Paul Heinz, there was so much work that was done at North this year. So much rug that was replaced, so many ceiling tiles with lighting. It was just an incredible amount of things that we kind of ran out of time because he would have continued to do more. As you can see on the facilities page, our auditorium is in need of renovation. The old ceiling tiles, which are on the plan for next year, I've already talked to Paul about the rugs that are remaining. There's a few that still need to be replaced, some lighting that needs to be improved, and some ceiling tiles as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from my colleagues, Ms. Cahill?
Well, I just, that's a lot, and I love the passion. And I would say that, you know, when we look at the scores and, you know, Mrs. Lebo mentions it all the time. I think our system has been doing a really great job in making sure that the kids didn't fall that far behind or even made some gains in their scores. But now you're at the helm, so the new scores for this year with the pandemic behind us, you're going to own all those, all the success that comes with that, you know, next year. I do have to say, you know, with your comments about going to the high school and how happy you are to see the community and, you know, the life at North Quincy High School. Being new to the school committee, people will ask me all the time, you know, "How do you like being on the school committee? What's it like?" And I have to really comment that one of the things I'm really proud of is our school system. And it's because of the passion of the leadership, the principals, the staff, and the support that the kids get because we can have a million goals, but implementation and student support, that's how you make them successful. And so, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
Thank you. Can you come to my house tomorrow with a few kids?
And we're elderly, so we can use those kids coming to our house.
I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Gilbert, for stepping in and just making sure that North Quincy just keeps rolling on. I don't want to say roll Yakoo. I will say you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you and your team. Great report, great results, and go volleyball. Yeah, could be state champs. That close. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. Gouli.
Thank you. Great presentation, Dan.
Thank you.
Sounds like the high school I went to years ago. It's 60 years ago. And so it's a great, it was a great school then. It sounds like it's continuing to be a great school. And you have carried the torch passed on to you by many, many great principals at North Quincy High School who have continued to make it a great school and continue the traditions and make it a great school. So for that, I'm really proud. And just as an aside, five of the nine members of the school committee went to law.
Five of the nine?
Miracle.
Seven.
Five of the seven.
Seven.
Whatever.
That's a North Quincy graduate.
I was good in Spanish. I wasn't good in math.
First of all, welcome, Dan, in your new role, and congratulations. And you did a terrific job at Meadows, so we have high expectations. And it sounds like you've already hit the ground running. I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Skinner and Mrs. Holland as the son of a 2020, as the father of a 2022 graduate. They did an amazing job helping him navigate high school and prepping him for college. And he's doing amazing at UNH, as I'm sure all the graduates are as well. So I just want to give you a personal shout out. The accountability data looks terrific. I know Emily will probably ask a lot of deeper questions on the vocal data and all that. You heard, you probably were in the other room, and you heard some of the questions that I had, so I have comparable questions for you. And again, you can do a deeper dive, and it's going to be on access to advanced courses, graduation rates, dropout rates, chronic absenteeism. If you could just sometime this year, just kind of evaluate whether or not there's a disproportionate impact along racial or economic lines and report back to us at some point. That would be useful to know. Same questions around the incidences. Are you seeing any substantial increase, decrease?
I think, you know, for me, I can't speak to what happened prior to. I can tell you that, like I said, it feels like normal school. We're seeing normal kinds of behavioral issues which are being addressed, but nothing that's alarming or nothing over the top that we've not seen in the past.
On the facility stuff, it sounds like you had a lot checked off on your list from last year, so I'm not going to ask any facility questions. On, same question on parental input. Did you get parental input before you came to us?
No, I did not present that to them. Lots of conversations, lots of talk on soccer fields with parents or football field at veterans or wherever, but nothing formally. And traditionally, what we've done is, once it's been approved, then we would present it to our PAC and school council, but nothing before. I would love the opportunity to do that prior to.
Yeah. Well, hopefully this body will, you know, we'll talk about it afterwards, and hopefully we'll ask you if you can get some input before it. And if there's modifications, you can at least say, "Hey, this was the parent input. This is how we tweaked the plan," because we're going to vote on it immediately following that. So lesson learned.
I do always call it a living document, though, because it is, and we adjust accordingly as necessary. And so if something, because you can't predict what's going to happen over the course of the year, and you don't know where you're going to have to intervene or when you're going to have to respond to certain things. And, you know, kind of that, when we're asking parents what they need, it's not a formal school improvement plan kind of thing, but it is certainly our being purposeful in making sure that parents have a voice in how we do and what we do kind of thing. But yeah.
And then the last two things are, as, you know, now that I have two boys in college, the beneficiary of dual enrollment programs. Incredible, you know, that schools take those credits. And, you know, it eases the financial burden, not just to the parent, but to the students if they take out loans. So I'm a gigantic fan of the dual enrollment programs. And you do a good job promoting them, administering them, and helping students do well. So I appreciate that. And then, you know, Emily and I often give a shout out to the ROTC. They are just rock stars. You know, I mean, we go through the pandemic and, you know, we waived the community service requirement, and they're out there, and some of them have hundreds, if not a thousand, hours. It's insane. It's insane what they do. And so, you know, I love Sergeant DeLorenzo. I think he's just, he's a crazy man. He's everywhere, all the time, morning, late at night, weekends. I see him at events. And those students are doing a lot of good in our city, and I appreciate that.
Yeah. He keeps telling me to slow down, and I keep saying, "Sergeant, why don't you slow down a little bit? We can help you out. How about we help you out?" It is amazing. Dual enrollment, like the opportunities, early college, high school. We have, next Friday, we have a ceremony for Adam's scholarship. 135 kids will get a scholarship. You know, I mean, think about the amount of opportunity that provides for families. It's just incredible.
Thank you. Great job.
Thanks.
I have just a couple of questions and comments. I agree with you completely. The opportunities available at the school are amazing. And I've said this many times, the opportunities that we have for our high school kids in Quincy is incredible. If you can't find your passion here somewhere, then it's a different issue. Because there is so many opportunities. I love the diversity of your extended day offerings. I think they're great. They're really focused on populations that need sort of some support around that stuff. So it's great to see all that coming out. I really love the diverse offerings. I was really thrilled about your department goals, too. I agree with you. The civics goal and the social studies thing is right on. I mean, it is our responsibility. And we now being charged with that through the Department of Education to make sure we have that in the high school. And hopefully with the civics lessons that are going on and the curriculum that's going on in the eighth grade, we'll see some real change in what kids know. I mean, I never took civics, and I wish I had because I still struggle since watching that electoral. What is going on? Your sped goal about the transition plans is so important. It really is, and starting those as early as possible. It's really great to see that. I love that the deans are taking a big interest in the attendance thing. So I was really thrilled to see that. I have some questions about the Open Parachute thing, but we're going to deal with that as a system. So you don't have to worry about that.
Gotcha.
Vocal surveys, some great, great numbers, really. So congratulations. There are some really great numbers in the vocal survey. I'm glad we're going to go out and do more of it. I have a big concern at both of our schools about one particular question that says, "The things I am learning in school are going to be relevant to me." And if we aren't getting that point across to these kids at this point in time, across our high schools, it seems to be an issue that they don't see any relevance in what they're learning.
Right.
And I think it's really hard for kids to learn if they don't see the relevance for a lot of kids. Some kids will just learn it anyway, but I really worry about that. And the facilities, I have a couple of questions. So why are we replacing rugs with rugs?
They're rug tiles, and so tiles can be picked up and taken out. Some of the floors, I don't think are, this is Paul's realm, not mine. I think some of the flooring is not conducive to tile floor. And so like at Meadows, they went the route of the rug tiles so that if pieces need to be replaced, they just pick up one and put down another one. But that would be a question, I think, more for Paul.
I just worry about it because some of those rugs at North Quincy were 30 years old. Are there still 30-year-old rugs at North Quincy a few places?
No, not 30.
Older. They're older. They're older.
Couple.
And, you know, the health implications around that are really important for us to be paying attention to. And that's all I've got. I think it was a wonderful presentation. Oh, no, yes. We want to talk about the class sizes.
So our class sizes, the ones that are, you know, we've obviously seen a great deal of growth in the population. There's 1,472 kids at North Quincy High now. All of our numbers above 28 are advanced and honors level classes. We have two geometries that are advanced at 29. U.S. Government and Politics, World History honors, advanced. And then several 28s that are advanced for 10th grade advanced, or excuse me, 11th grade advanced, English.
What about the 27 classrooms that have 27 students? I mean, there's not much of a difference.
No, right, right, right. They are, with the exception of a couple here and there, a couple CCPs. We have been working on adding additional opportunities to break those up. So we're working on a couple of classes that we are going to take on another teacher to teach an additional class that will minimize some of those classes. Like we have an English class that we're going to split and then kind of reshuffle some kids at the beginning of the next quarter, so Monday of next week, that some of those will go down.
So I think we'd like to keep our eye on that also as we move forward and see what kind of support you're getting. I know there's some opportunities for teachers to pick up an extra class.
Yes.
And have you been utilizing that also?
Yep, yep.
It would be great to see if we could nudge that down a bit, especially the CP classes.
Agreed. Agreed.
I'm good. Oh, Mrs. Hoobly, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I actually just wanted to echo a lot of what my colleagues have said. This is a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for being here. I was amazed by the number of clubs that you have. I think that's amazing, the variety and the number of, sheer number of and the variety of was amazing. Like Mr. Gatra was saying, the ROTC is phenomenal. I love every year going to the banquet and hearing what they've accomplished over the year. It brings tears to my eyes every year that they do so much. And to Ms. Cahill's point, I love your passion. It's amazing to sit here and listen to you. It brings the school alive. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to entertain a motion to accept the plan by Mrs. Cahill, submitted by Mr. Santoro. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will.
There were a motion to adjourn. Just before I make a motion to adjourn, I just want to say this for the superintendent's benefit also. We need to have a student advisory committee. We are required by law to have a student advisory committee with high school students on it.
Last year.
We've been talking about it for like five years. So we need to find a way to get to the principals and the student councils and get that advisory committee because we need to be hearing student voice also. So I really am going to push for that somehow, and I know that we've had a lot of changes this year, but we should be settled down by now, so I would like to get that.
Can we do something for the kids to be engaged for a reason? Can they get credit for being on a student advisory for one of their courses or something? So that it's something.
If we did it outside of the school time, we could give them.
Yeah, so they can come here, they can make a presentation.
We could, for that. But I also think that we, part of the problem is trying to meet them when they're not already engaged. As you can see, they're pretty busy.
Right.
These kids, most of the kids who do something are already pretty busy. So I think we actually are going to have to find a way to get down to them during the daytime, during some time, to figure out how we can get their input. But we need to figure that out. We can figure that out. Okay. So now I will make, take a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Motion.
And seconded by Mr. Santoro. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So during instructional time inside the classroom, they are not allowed to have cell phones. Cell phones are not allowed to be out at all. The feedback we received from first, starting with staff, is very receptive of that because it's a school-wide policy and is not up for interpretation by, from class to class. Because it's a school-wide policy and it's not up for interpretation by, from class to class. So teachers know right away if there's anything that digitally that they need to do, they can use their Chrome, the school issued Chromebook to be able to do that right away. So it helps enforce the student expectation in the classroom because it's been made very clear from the beginning. I think the rollout of the policy, knowing that, you know, we're at post-COVID and everything else, putting this in, being able to have this message clear with parents. So we had a parent info night with clear expectation of no cell phones. We met with each class individually to go over that same policy. We even, you know, talked to staff on their first day on the policy. So the rollout was efficient enough. Now, if we have some students that, you know, for whatever reason, they use their cellphone, our deans will get involved. Student's cellphone will be taken for the day. It may be some extra disciplinary actions depending on the situation that occurs. In, in many events where it's, it's clear, did you have your cellphone in class? You have to know, whatever the reason is at this point, you know, the expectation is here on that. So right now, I think the overall senses from our staff, they're really happy with the policy as it is in place. I've actually had a few students that actually said thank you, which was shocking to me as well. Because in some ways, you know, students, like having those boundaries in place for some is like, okay, I know I'm not supposed to use a cellphone. It helps me be focused in the class and go from there. And also there are opportunities during, you know, lunch and whatever else that I could still use it. So, you know, it's, it's something that we continue to push forward with everything else that we're dealing with, but it has been effective so far.
Thank you.
Well, you were at Broad Meadows last year and.
So I didn't know.
Middle, well, middle schools basically had a no cellphone use.
It's a no tolerance policy.
Right.
Yep, yep. So kid loses, if, if we catch them with their cellphone, take it, call the parents, have them come and pick it up. In middle school, there were, there were times where kids, because of numerous violations, had either put their cellphone on my desk for the day. Or for two weeks, or some for the rest of the year. But, so that's, you know, that's me walking into North and did the exact, basically the exact same thing that Keith did. Lots of meetings with kids, set the expectation on day one with staff in all of our assemblies. We end up noticing, and I'm sure Keith would say the same thing, and his deans would as well, is that there's a certain number of kids that use it more than others. And it makes me concerned sometimes for those kids and why there is such a need to have that phone all the time. I think it's a healthy balance because we're not saying, you know, you know, in October, hey, we're taking, we're just taking them. You can't use them at all. But I think it's been some learning for staff as well about the capacity and what you can actually do with the Chromebook. We were talking about open, open parachute earlier. And open parachute has a feature where there's a, there's an exit ticket for every lesson that you do. Requires you to scan a QR code and teachers were talking today about, or staff were, were saying that we need cellphone service in certain areas so that we can do that. And I said, you don't need to do that because if you turn the camera app on the Chromebook and flip it around, it works just like a phone. And so some of that is just kind of relearning how to use the Chromebook because there is a much larger capacity than I think everybody knows. But all of the things that, that they need to, to be able to do, they can do on their cellphone. It's a distraction in the classroom. It's a distraction for the kid next to them. It's hard to learn when, when you're getting messages and direct messages and Snapchats while you're, you know, trying to learn Mandarin or, or, or whatever the case may be.
Doug and Kathy, do you have any questions of the principals?
I do. So you're, you're saying you both came in and instituted a, a new policy? Is that what you said? And, and things are going good?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no significant incidents?
No, I mean, like, like I said, there is, there's a balance. So we've given them opportunities to be able to use it at lunch or in the hallway or. But not during academic class time. You know, a lot of teachers have, and it's probably similar at Quincy High, some, some teachers have little shoe, you know, the little shoe things where kids come in, put them down. Others just say, put them in, you know, put them in your pocket or put them in your backpack. I don't want to see them while you're there.
I think the other thing is important, like you're dealing with teenagers, you know, we, we try to institute a student expectations that we could really enforce. Right? And so like being able to say no, no cell phones during class time, that's easy to enforce in comparison to saying no cell phones at all. Right? Because we got fifteen hundred students traveling during passing period. Who's, I mean, like, again, trying to monitor who's seeing what, who's doing what, like, it gets too much at that point. So we like enforceable rules, right, to be in place that it, it's easy kind of hand, handle that way. And then also give our students some latitude to be able to use their cellphone because it is a big part of who they are today as well. So that combination of both is important.
Did, um, did you, did you guys bring copies of your policy for us to peek at? Do you have copies?
I don't have a, a written policy.
Oh, you don't?
It's been, it was stated at every single one of our assemblies at the beginning of the year. It goes out in, in my newsletter as a reminder to parents. Please make sure, reinforce this at home. There are times where I'll say, as part of the morning announcements after the pledge of allegiance or before I turn it over to our students. But I wouldn't say, I have not written it down in a formal, like, kind of policy. But if you were to ask the kids at North, what's the cellphone policy, they'd be able to tell you.
You have the same approach as Keith where they can use it in the caf.
Yes.
Yep, they can use it in the house.
Same.
We have, um, we have established a one-pager kind of student expectation list on each, hung up in each classroom, right? And it has a QR code to it. We send it out to the parents as well. So everybody would know, like, cell phones is one of seven or eight student expectations that we have altogether, right? And so, you know, the, the policy is made clear. This is what the policy is, along with other things. Here's the expectation and we kind of move on from that, right? And so anytime if there's a violation of that, there's some times, you know, we really ask our teachers that had the autonomy inside the classroom of sort of a student is violating that. You know, the first step would be with the teacher kind of handling her own, his or her own classroom management issues from there. And then it would, if it becomes an issue of insubordination, that's when the deans and everything else, getting parents get involved, having to pick up the phone and all that other stuff. So where those, those cases where it gets to that level are minimum. Right now, we're at a place where our students are, you know, they may not be happy with that, but have been compliant for the most part in, in not having cell phones in class.
So I know that Dan said, I think you said your student population is fourteen seventy-two. Is that, and what was yours, Keith?
Uh, fourteen fifty-two.
Fourteen fifty-two. And how many incidents, cellphone incidents have you had in the first two months?
So with, so we have our monthly data. The cellphone that was on, on Aspen for us, I would say out of fourteen hundred, over fourteen hundred students. We've had twelve in a month of October documented cellphone issues that, that took place in the month of October. And which a dean would have to get involved in. And again, those are situations where a student uses a cellphone, they're not allowed to use it. There's been consequences for that and we kind of move on. But again, from a documentation standpoint and data collection, we have that as well.
How about you, Dan?
We've had less than ten incidents where we've had to intervene on certain kids. One which resulted in disciplinary action because a student refused and continued to refuse to, to comply. That has not been the issue moving forward. I did misspeak. It is in our handbook. We did put it in our handbook. So my mistake.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we're contemplating here, I mean, it sounds like you have it well in hand, right?
I believe so.
Okay. One of the things that we're contemplating here is whether or not the school committee needs to institute either a district-wide policy or a policy for the high schools or a policy for the high schools, middle schools, whatever. But you feel pretty confident that you're in pretty good shape right now.
Absolutely.
I do.
This is Yobli.
I was just going to say, is, is there something you would need from us in the policy that would make it us be more supportive of you in what you're doing in the schools?
I would say just a reminder to, to the parents, you know, and one of the things we had to institute with parents was, you know, if there's. There's an emergency situation or whatever, but to be able to contact the school, right? And, you know, being able to, whether it's that student's counselor, dean, whoever, right, and be able to relay the message that way. You know, we, for the most part, our students' cell phones are off, they put away. And there have been times when, you know, a, a parent may call for a situation, you know, that occurs. And now not only that student is distracted, but now we have to deal with the, that particular issue if that student has not said anything, you know, to us or whatever else. So just, I think the constant message for everyone being on one accord as far as what needs to happen in those particular situations. Contacting the school, have the school, if there's an emergency situation, we can get the student and go from there. Otherwise, the overall policy itself that I think both of us are instituting seems to be working out fine as much as for the most part.
I do think it would, you know, that you always get the, well, at Quincy High, we can do this. And, you know, my brother goes to Quincy High and he can do this. Or my, my brother goes to North. So I think, you, you know, if, it, it would probably be helpful if there was, you know, something in place that's for the whole district. And so that way, you know, kind of every parent knows exactly what the expectation is and it's, it's not school to school. Which sometimes, you know, at the high school, because we have a lot of families, some, some go to Quincy, some go to North. And we just want to make sure that the message is the same kind of at both places. I do like the balance of what we're doing right now because it does recognize that, that, you know, unfortunately, a cellphone has become such a big part of kids' lives, in our lives as well. So I, I do like the, you know, the kind of, the healthy balance between making sure that, you know, can't use it here, but there are opportunities for, for kids to use it in, in other places.
Thank you.
Mr. Guttar.
One more question. So since you instituted the policy, have you had any, over the last two months, any teacher complaints or parent complaints?
Neither for me.
I mean.
I think parents are, the ones that I've spoken to are thrilled that there's something in place that limits the amount of time their kids can be on their phones during the school day.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I think I'm the one here that, that's thinking, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So if you guys have it in hand, why do we need to legislate something to impose upon you? That being said, if you wrote it, if you wrote the policy that you wanted us to codify and we shopped it around the principals and talked to the parents. I would have much more comfort in, in setting up some, if there is a district-wide, or is it high school, middle school, elementary school? Are there different policies? I, I, I don't know. So before I impose something, I mean, I love what I'm hearing. You're saying that you guys took leadership roles, set up a policy, communicated it to faculty, staff and parents and students, and it's working.
And I, I will say, you know, being a former middle school principal, the ninth graders, as they come in, the expectation is they can't use it because they could never use it.
Right.
You know, I think over the last couple of years with COVID, there, you know, there's some negotiating with kids because we're, you know, in many respects, during hybrid learning, you're sitting in the same room for six hours every single day. And there were some liberties that we gave them, but took them back last year. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Santoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'm pretty familiar with the handbooks. Just make sure the handbooks reflect what your policy is because it would be.
But microphone's not on.
I can't see Mr. Bragoli.
Did you guys?
Blind leading the blind, yeah. Desmond Bragoli. He found his name.
Thank you. The policies in the handbook, just make sure that what you're saying is in the policies because you don't want to put two different messages out there. I'm hap, I thought this was a lot worse. So I'm happy to hear that at least kids are complying to the rules. I know that in the past, there were some kids that really took this to the end. And as long as there's punishment for those, those kids, whether it be removal of the cellphone or whatever. I know that some of them would probably take you right to the end to say, no, I'm not giving this up. And I don't want to see teachers put in a situation where they have to grab them or, you know, anybody who's not complying to their rule in the classroom of putting it away. I just hope they have access to immediate response. And, but thank you, thank you. I think as long as your handbooks reflect what you're telling us. I don't think we need to set a policy citywide, but that's certainly up to you as a subcommittee. But thank you.
Mr. Lebo.
So I, the first thing I wrote down was handbook. If, if it's not in the handbook, you're not going to really be able to truly enforce it, right? Because the parents haven't seen it, they haven't signed it. So the handbook really gives you coverage to, so whatever the policy is, I think it has to be in the handbook. Also, the consequences have to be in there. I, the best consequence I heard was from anybody who's doing this, Mr. Gilbert, was when you said, first time I take the phone for the day. Second time I take the phone, every time you walked in this building for the next week, you stop here on your way and then give me your phone. And at some point, your phone's dropped off here every single day. And if it isn't, we'll call your parents. So that's a pretty simple. Consequence. And I think it's, I mean, a little difficult for you, but for the rest of us, it's pretty simple. But you know, I think that could, because I, we don't want to put this policy, or you put a policy in place that is, doesn't have any consequences. Because there's nothing worse than being that person out there without a consequence. I would be perfectly happy to make this a policy, but we can look into that.
Mr. Santoro, then Miss Me, Miss Yobli.
Yeah, I, dealing with legal aspects, I know when attorneys come into your office, they say, show me in your handbook. It's the first thing they say. So it's very important that that handbook reflects it. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Yobli.
I just want a clarification. When I asked you the question before about how we would support you, it sounded like you said back to me that having it be a policy would be what you would prefer as opposed to having it in the handbook. Did I mishear you?
I just think it's helpful if, if we have the same policy and whether that's in our handbook and we write the same thing in both handbooks. Or that's something that you, this body chooses to write. I just think it's important to have a consistency among the schools with similar consequences if, you know, if it gets to that point. But a really clear policy for, for families and for kids.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I think it would be better as a policy than for that, for that point.
Mr. Lebo, then, Ms. Cahill.
So I just want to say one thing about the, the policy. I think that if we come up with a K through twelve policy around this, we give it, we draft something.
Right.
And we give it to our principals before they, before we finally go in. The other thing I want to say is I heard from a parent, I can't remember where I was. I was probably, you know, walking in some event or that Abigail Adams thing. I'm not sure where I was, but a parent said to me, thank you for the cellphone policy. My son's grades have increased. So, I mean, when you hear stuff like that, it's pretty encouraging. And, and everybody knows it's the rule. All the kids know it's the rule. So that's very encouraging too. And, and once you have everybody behind something, you can push it to where it needs to go. So I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Cahill.
I'm going to echo Emily as well because I have heard from parents who are really positive. They, they're happy about having this in place. And they've seen academic success with not having that distraction in the classroom. I think we need a policy. For me, I think it just keeps things very clear, consistent throughout the system. Like Emily said and everyone on, on board here, have you guys review it, make sure it makes sense for, for the schools. But this way, you can't have someone, a parent or someone come to the table and say, you know, you know, where is this? Where's the policy? What is it? It's your policy, but I think happening as a, a true system policy really makes sense. I, I'm in favor of doing it as a policy, to be honest with you. And I also think that the compromise of having kids not use it in the classroom, but have it in their free time, makes sense too. Because it is part of where we are today in the world and even us as adults. You know, we, I want to put my phone away when I'm doing a task and I'm on task at work. But then, you know, when I'm on my lunch or whatever, I'll take my phone and check in with people and do some things like that. So I think that's a good balance and, and it keeps the kids from digging their heels in too. You know, otherwise, if they had to not have it all day long, they, they would not be able to probably do it all day, you know? So I, I'm a huge proponent for making a, a policy and seeing that it's working for the kids and in the schools. I think it's something that we should be looking at.
Thank you. I just want to echo what Mr. Santoro said about teachers not being put in a position to be combative with a student regarding cellphones. That's a bad situation for both.
Yep.
And we shouldn't have that. So we have to make sure that those teachers are protected that way.
Yeah, yeah. The way that I presented it was, I don't want you to get into a battle with the kid. If there's a cellphone violation, let the dean know and then we'll handle it with that student. But we always try to allow our teachers to maintain the relationship with the student in whatever capacity it is. But certainly don't want them battling with anybody.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ford and Mr. Gilbert. Appreciate you being here.
Our pleasure.
It's been a long night for you. We're not finished, but.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
So we have in front of us are the Educated Survey, which the first two questions, I think are pretty self-explanatory. I don't think there's any discussion needed there. Is there any discussion on question number three?
Nope.
No? Okay, question number four?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So it was very efficient to have the principals up here and tell us that. Do we want to do that for the other grades? And instead of sending out this monstrous survey, I mean, they just, I just asked how many, how many teachers reported an issue for both of the principals? And they answered that. I was just curious. If we.
I just think in the discussion we had before that we talked about having a survey sent out to make sure that we are cognizant of how the teachers feel about it.
Okay.
And I think that's important, that they are surveyed. We just can't arbitrarily, I don't think arbitrarily say, this is it, and no, we didn't get your input, but this is what we're going to do. So I think it's important to have their input. That's the only reason I would suggest that we go forward with this. So again, question number four? Any question?
One question. I thought we had something in there that says, I don't know. How would I know what they're using?
Exactly.
We asked to have.
Cellphones were used, but I cannot determine the reason.
That's what it says. It's just more sophisticated than I thought.
Which?
So I didn't recognize.
What question do you want?
Four.
All right.
Second to last.
Yep. Okay, so is that, Zach?
I'm good.
Satisfied? Question five?
Can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
Can we put, they were used, but I couldn't determine at the top? Does it matter? I mean.
I like that.
You can do anything you want.
Say again?
Move that to.
Anything you want.
No, no, I'm just.
No, we can't.
Because I think for us, it's useful to know if a teacher thinks somebody's using the cellphone. I mean, we can get into whether or not, ah, they're gaming, now what? What's the consequence for that? Right? What's the consequence for social media?
I'm not placing the online bet.
That's what I'm saying, you know? I don't want to get into the judging.
Why do we even have to put that? Why do we even have to put the options?
Well.
Which ones? Gaming?
Like, in the past, in past school years, I believe that students were using the cellphones, our personal electronic devices in class.
Correct.
And yes or no? You know what I mean?
I agree.
Because it doesn't really matter what we.
And I don't think we can, I don't think you can tell. I can't tell.
And why does it matter if they were listening to music? Are we going to be like, okay?
They've been on their cellphones all night.
I can't tell what they're doing.
Have you been gaming over there? Yeah. I would just say yes or no.
Cheating on homework.
You know?
I agree.
And then not have to determine because it doesn't matter if they're listening to music or gaming, they're still on their personal devices.
Well, I guess, I think the issue was cheating.
Cheating on schoolwork.
The only thing is, I think the issue was, it was a significant discussion about cheating.
Yes.
That kids were passing information to incoming classes.
And that's valid.
You know.
But the point, I mean, I agree with you, that's true, but it doesn't matter because we really are trying to identify if they're using.
And we're not.
I think, I think, I think the, I think the real, the real question for the survey, kids using the phones in class and is it disruptive? You know what I mean?
You can still cheat in the hallway.
It's kind of like what we really do with the data.
Question number four.
No.
But I think the policy's going to help with that anyway. Right.
Did they use it?
Did people use it or was it disruptive?
Yes.
Yeah, just get rid of four.
So we eliminate question number four? Okay.
That's why late people like us don't do surveys.
Question number five?
Real survey.
Let's move on, it's getting a little bit late here. Any questions on that particular item?
No, I'm good with it.
Anybody else? Okay, number six. Eliminating cellphone, other personal devices. Is, okay. This is obviously subjective, so, but I think it's important.
Can I ask a question? Didn't we say that we were going to add a question that says, is there a policy in your school or are you aware if there's a policy in your school?
What, to the teachers?
Yeah.
I don't know. Did we?
I thought we.
We did talk about that last year.
I thought it's the last time and we were going to put that up front, you know? So it.
So you want to add a question? So number five says.
I think it was before three, right? I think we were going to put it, you know, are you aware if there's a cellphone use policy for students in your school?
That's a yes, no.
Yes or no? That's what I thought we were going to insert first and then, and then move into the other questions. So that tells us whether or not principals communicated with these folks about a policy.
Well, isn't that what number 11 technically is? The current practice is for students to have cellphones or personal electronic devices stored in their lockers that kind of.
The questions are elementary and middle school. Remember the first part, we're talking about, these questions are all directed at high school.
Yeah.
And we don't talk about that until question five. I think we'd be fine to put that up front. I think that would be sharp if everybody did know the policy though. But I'm willing to take.
All right. We've substituted it in for four.
Just put it in.
Yep.
Any objection?
No.
Okay. Again, six. Again, it's a subjective question. Anybody have any problem with it?
No.
About too harsh, about right, too lenient? Question seven? That would be dependent upon what, how you answer, as would eight and as would nine. Number 10. Do you agree with the following statement then?
So that's just a repeat of question three, just sends you there if you're a middle or a high school educator, it sends you to question 10.
Right. And then question 11 wraps it up with the elementary and.
Motion to approve with changes?
Motion by Ms. Hubley, second. So this will go forward with the corrections and then what we do with that.
We need data, we'll come back and we'll share the data with you.
Okay. So that'll be, how long would it take to get out and back?
We could just put a policy in the week of, the week after Thanksgiving, we have three teaching and learning subcommittees. We have three nights in a row so we could just put a policy meeting on one of those nights to acknowledge what they do there.
On one of the short nights. On one of the shorter nights.
It's never a short night, Emily.
One of the short nights.
Can I ask a question? So, once we do the survey, plan of action, right? Once we do the survey, we review the data at the committee meeting.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. And then we, what, how do we draft the policy?
Well, we could ask the high school principals to share what they've already communicated and then we could also, so we could do both those things at the meeting. We could have a draft of the policy that's based on what they've already done, review and the survey data.
Okay.
I think by the end of November.
Yeah.
And so my other question is, were we thinking about implementing a policy for the whole K through 12?
Yes.
So then we would have to take theirs and maybe revise, have a section for the other grades.
Kind of codify what the elementary and the middle school students are going to do.
As one of the principals just, you know, said, it's easier to implement something when it's already been implemented.
Yeah.
So you don't have to fight that fight when it comes to your level.
It's just good to have it in place so that if there is any kind of pushback from, you know, a family member or someplace, we have a.
It sounds to me, it sounds to me we haven't gotten any pushback at all.
No, no.
Except for maybe one or two kids.
Never know.
We'll have it on the agenda for a meeting if people can talk at a meeting if they want to come to open forum.
Okay.
Mr. Gudrow.
Could we ask the superintendent to ask all of the principals to share their cellphone policy with us? For all grades? And then, and I'd also be interested to know, do they think that it's working? Is it effective? And then we can see, you know, based on elementary or middle or high school, how they might be different or if they're different.
Why don't we let them take the survey?
Okay, does it say principals?
Administrators is a category.
It's part of it.
Can we, can we still ask them for the copy of the policy?
Sure.
Have them take the survey and then, and then bring the policy when we do the other policies.
Any other questions, any other concerns? So I don't, I'm not sure how you guys feel or members feel. We just don't want this to drag on and on and on.